Called this meeting to order, the Rockledge City Council, Wednesday, February 7, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. Do not pay attention to our clock up there. It's exactly two hours off somehow or another. City Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Mayor Price.
Here.
Councilman Smith.
Here.
Councilman Ferguson.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin.
Here.
Councilman Forrester.
Here.
Councilman Daskey.
Here.
Councilman Hartzell.
Here.
City Attorney Manicklear.
Here.
City Manager Fettro.
Here. Here.
Okay, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, and Councilman Ferguson's going to be doing our invocation tonight?
Yes, good evening. Let us bow our heads. Father, we thank you for this time as we assemble in the city of Rockledge in these chambers tonight. Lord, we pray tonight that we're led by you and not by our own intellect, Father. We declare this evening that thy kingdom come, thy will be done, as it is in heaven, so let it be in the city of Rockledge. It's in the name of Jesus Christ we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Thank you. Counsel has before them the minutes of the January 17, 2018, meeting. What is the pleasure of the counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on January 17, 2018.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second by Ferguson. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let me come down for presentations. We have a yard of the year tonight. Donia and Nadia Danielson, they're not here? Disappointed. But that's their yard, by the way. And we have a little presentation for them and a gift certificate to Rockledge Gardens for the 2017 Yard of the Year. This is a big deal. I'm surprised or disappointed they did not show up. And we have special recognition tonight, but he's not here with us. Our firefighter, Davy Brinkman. He was the 2017 Space Coast Fire Chiefs Association firefighter of the year. We wanted to recognize him here tonight, but he got deployed.
Oh, wow.
Yesterday, so he's gone.
Wow.
And he's in England for 60 days. Got deployed to England, so we can't present him with that tonight either. So my third presentation is Councilman Dwayne Daskey. Come on down. We're recognizing Councilman Daskey tonight for the successful completion of the Florida League of Cities inaugural institute of elected municipal officials. It's the IEMO V Municipal Leadership Certificate of Completion, December 8 and 9, 2017. Councilman Dwayne Daskey, congratulations.
Thank you.
Now I have the Space Coast Runners. You want to come on up? I think you've got a present. You have a presentation for us.
It's Running Zone Foundation.
You've got to speak into it. As we record it, your name and address for the record.
Yep. Hey, I'm Denise Piercy from Running Zone Foundation. I live in Indian Harbor Beach, Florida, and I'm the executive director of Running Zone Foundation, and we took over Space Coast Marathon about 2006. So we added the whole space theme, and the last five years, we had a five-year series that honored each shuttle that flew in space. And the participants, after participating in three years, got a Milky Way Challenge Medal, and then after doing all five, they got the Intergalactic Challenge Medal. So that's just a little of the bling that the participants, that they achieved over the five years. The five-year series just ended this year. We wanted to thank you for being a wonderful city and allowing us to run the beautiful roads each year, and thank you so much for, we really appreciate. The roads are beautiful, and you work with us so well, and our half marathon sells out in minutes. So what we did for the next four years, we have a new series starting this November that honors human spaceflight exploration. So the first year is Mercury. We have Laura Shepherd Churchley, Alan Shepard's daughter, coming to speak with that, and the medal is the Mercury Medal. And we added a whole bunch of slots to the half marathon because now we have a north half and a south half. So we wanted to thank City of Rockledge for being an integral part of the event each year with some goodies.
It's going to be a fast meeting tonight, folks. We have no financial report. We have no public hearings, ordinances, or resolutions, and we're on number eight already on our agenda, reports from boards and committees. Who's giving me reports from boards and committees?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ferguson.
I move to be in the receipt of the minutes of the following meetings. The Fire, General Police, Employee Retirement Board's Quarterly Joint Meeting, November 16, 2017. The Rockledge Environmental Enhancement, the Tree Board, minutes of the meeting on January 11, 2018, and the Community Redevelopment Agency Board of Commissioners, minutes of the meetings on January 24, 2018. And to be considered independently, any recommendations contained therein.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, let's go down to our first one, which is the CRA. City Manager, you want to talk about this?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. There was the chairman who had been voted in earlier in the year, Mr. Lum, had gotten news that he will have additional duties at his workplace, president of his organization and his industry and so forth, so he didn't feel that he could properly serve as chair of the CRA board. He does want to stay on the board, so that committee, that board, voted another chairperson, Commissioner Ed Inman, and a vice-chair, Commissioner Carol Lamonts, for councils. They recommend a council.
Any Mayor and City Council have any questions? Everybody understand what we're doing?
Yep.
Sir.
I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Move to approve the recommendation from the CRA board.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Unfinished business, none. Consent business, before we go to consent business, I'm going to pull 10G from the consent. Mr. Hartzell has already been to this particular one. So we have A through F. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Daskey.
Move for the approval of these consent business items. First one is use of forfeiture funds for purchase of two-body cameras and accessories. Approved January 17, 2018. Purchase amount revised, and this is for the Department of Public Safety. Second is the purchase of a 2018 Ford F-150 Super Crew 4x4 Police Packaged Truck for the Department of Public Safety. Next is special events, Space Coast Runners and Running Zone Foundation, 2018 Marathon and Half Marathon, Sunday, November 25, 2018, for the city manager. Next is a special event and waiver of administration fee for the annual St. Mary's Fair, April 4 through April 18, 2018, again for the city manager. Next up is a special event, Boaters Exchange 2018, Coastal Angler Magazine Boating and Fishing Expo, April 21, 2018, for the city manager. F is the extension of tenant lease, grandparents raising grandchildren, Rockledge Community Resource Center, again for the city manager.
Second, the motion. We have a motion. We have a second. This is consent business. There is no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, discussion, 2018 Bovard County Boy Scout Golden Eagle Dinner, April 10, 2018. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mayor and I met with a lady named Stephanie. She's a new, I guess, district director, and she wanted to introduce herself, but she also came and invited council to the Golden Eagle Dinner, of which you have information in your packet, and so I wanted to ask for council's direction whether or not the council, in theory, could have three options, whether council chose for Rockledge to be a sponsor, whether council chose to be a table host, or if just in individual attendance, if you will. I might add, while we all dearly love the Boy Scouts and what they do, this event is what's called a hard ask, where if you attend, you will be expected to contribute money. So I just want to make sure everybody knows and make an informed decision this evening, so I would look for direction from the council after you.
How much is a table, City Manager?
The least expensive sponsorship is $1,500.
Did we have any money budgeted this year for that?
We do not have anything budgeted, Mayor.
Okay. I would recommend, just my opinion, that we not take a table for the city of Rockledge, we never have in the past. I've gone many times, but I've always been invited at other people's tables, and if anybody, I've been invited this year to Victory Cruise Lines to sit at their table as well, and if anybody, just council would like to go, I'm sure I can get you at that table.
I tend to agree. I don't think, I don't think I want to see the city get put in a position of deciding what outside organizations we're going to spend money for and which ones we're not, because that's a road to unhappiness.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I've attended this event many times. It's a very worthy event for our support, however, it's not something the city should be doing in my mind.
Right.
Personally, I've made my donations and everything.
Right.
But it's not something the city should do.
Same with myself. I've been several times, and I've always been invited to other people's tables, but I don't think this is something we should be spending taxpayer money on for a nonprofit like this, in my opinion. Anybody else have any opinions? So we can either take no action, or we can deny this, but Joe, just no action, fine.
Unless someone wants to make a motion, and there's a second, there's no motion, there's no action, nothing.
If somebody wants to make a motion to, for the city to put out the $1,500, then they have to have a second, and we go from there. Does anybody want to go?
I've went in the past, and I could probably want to go again.
Okay, I can get you at our table if you want to go.
I'll be teaching Tuesday night.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Al Tameza and I will be seeing the gates open and Panama Canal's on.
Good for you.
Fifteen days, we won't be here.
Good for you.
I'm going to be with him.
There you go.
Can we sit at your table?
We're stowaway.
You planned that, didn't you, Joe? Okay, let's move on then. No action. Action item B, approval of engineering proposal, task order for Tetra Tech to resolve an issue with the air release valve for lift station 42, Three Meadows Subdivision. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. This has come to the attention of Mr. Elmore, myself, several residents there have the unpleasant experience of having a loud hissing sound as well as a rather unpleasant odor when gases are released, and we would like to have this engineered and corrected properly so these citizens frankly don't suffer anymore. Asking for council's support to, for the engineering of $9,874.
Yeah, when I read this on my agenda, I had no idea we had such a contraption in between two houses in Rockledge, and it was letting out this odor for all these years, and I just, I never believed we would have had something designed like that.
This has been going on for a while?
Apparently. It's been years.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I'd like to move the proposal, task order for Tetra Tech to resolve the issue on the air release valve on lift station 42 in Three Meadows Subdivision.
Second. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, that's it for our agenda. At this time, petitions, remonstrances, and communications. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to their city council about anything to do with the city of Rockledge? Now is your chance. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak to your city council about anything to do with Rockledge? Seeing none? Let's move on. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I know that sort of its back is to the audience, but council can see this lovely basket up here on the counter. The St. Mary's School has brought this to the city for the city council for all your hard work and your service to the community, so I thought I had to protect it because staff and all of us were eyeballing it the entire week, but luckily it stayed intact. I didn't even eat the chips, you guys, and gals, so anyway. So it's up to council, however you all would like to, if you want to help yourself before you go this evening, or however you want it distributed, but it's for you all.
Anybody in the audience want anything to come up here?
Wait a minute, Mayor. You guys go first. So that's one item. We were very appreciative, and there are notes here for council as well, said I'd encourage you to each read a note or two. They're very lovely from the kids. So that's one item. Just a friendly reminder for your calendars, I know several of you have RSVPDS. The Fire Ops Training 101 will be held Saturday, March 24, at Fire Station 3, I believe, Fire Station 3. And also, actually, this Monday night, we are happy to be the host of the Space Coast League of Cities Dinner at the Rockledge Country Club, and each of you are attending, and we look forward to that, your participation. Next item is regarding potential SWAT training down in Satellite Beach. So as you know, training has been going on for years at the city, in almost every city, but this is sort of, I'll say, the first one, if you will, on my watch as city manager. And so we were asked to sign a Hold Harmless Agreement for our SWAT team to participate, and I would ask the attorney's assistants in properly explaining it in legal detail, but essentially, if we do this, we would be liable, we would be responsible if our people were injured, and the developer or entity hosting the training would not be. So again, since this was kind of the first item on my, under my watch, I wanted to make sure as a policy decision that you all made an informed decision. It's great training. That's certainly fine if we wish to do that, but I wanted to make sure that council knew that I was entering into this or signing this Hold Harmless Agreement if you all chose to do that. So I don't know if Mr. Manicklear wants to add anything, if you don't mind, Mayor.
We were approached by the Rockledge Police Department. They wish to, the SWAT team wishes to engage in a training that's going to take place in Satellite Beach. I believe it's in some, an old housing area that they're going to be involved with. The owner of the property has requested a Hold Harmless Agreement. Obviously, training is always good for the police and for the police department, however, Hold Harmless Agreements and indemnification agreements in the great state of Florida have been interpreted in a rather broad way. If we indemnify and possibly if we hold harmless, we could be holding harmless and indemnifying anybody, not only the property owner, but any of the other police departments that may be involved. The lawyer is always the black cloud. It can spiral into an enormous amount of money, not only for our own people, but the other, and if you're going to approve this, and I can prepare the Hold Harmless in short order, there, you should need to make an informed decision that it could be, if something goes wrong, a substantial amount of money out of the city's pocket. That's what the little black cloud here has to say about that. It could be a problem.
Can it be written so that it only covers the property owner?
Every indemnification agreement, Hold Harmless Agreement is written that way, but the court seems to interpret that if we do it as a municipality or a government entity, we're not going to be able to limit it to one party. Anybody who's involved in it, we essentially have waived a lot of our sovereign immunity protections, and it can turn into a real nightmare. We're the deepest pockets, and that's what everybody's going to go after, and you need to understand that there is a potential, and I say it's going to happen, this whole thing may go just perfectly and never be a problem, but you need to be informed that there is a potential liability to the city if we do this for what happens to not only our people, but the other people who are involved and the property.
Okay. This is not something new. We've done this for many years. We're just being advised now of something we probably should have been advised of years ago as a city council.
They never asked us for a Hold Harmless Agreement before, and that's, we're still responsible. If one of our guys gets hurt, we got a workers' comp case. Right, exactly. And we always would have had a workers' comp case if they got hurt. And if there, yeah, if there had been an injury of some sort, depending on whether it was faulty equipment or whatever it may be, we could have wound up in a lawsuit, and this is the first time that they've ever asked for a Hold Harmless Agreement for, from us, and if you're going to make that decision, you should be informed of what the potential ramifications are.
Definitely. Does everybody understand what's going on here? It's up to the city council how you want to proceed, or take no action. Nobody wants to talk tonight? Go ahead, LaBrenda.
If I could. So if council decides to take no action, Mr. Mayor, then I'm going to assume that that is, by council silence, I'm not going to sign a Hold Harmless Agreement. I would think that's how I would take that, Mr. Manicklear, unless, what would you recommend?
If, this is something that requires the council's action. If they take no action, then we do not do it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wanted to make sure it was clear.
I do have a question, though. If they didn't ask for the Hold Harmless, it would just be like it has been in the past. They would just go, they would participate. If there's an issue, then it becomes workman's comp situation, but because they're asking for this, Hold Harmless, that takes it to a whole different level.
And that's true. I will say this, that I was never consulted in the past on these types of activities. We always had our liability for our own people.
Right.
And employees, but when you start getting into the area of Hold Harmless Agreements, different police departments, different property owners, then you start getting into a world of liability that is, can be very intimidating.
And I assume that, I mean, this is just one activity that they would participate in, but I'm sure the chief is always looking for other opportunities for them to train and go to that we're not going to have to sign a Hold Harmless.
Correct, Councilman. I see Captain Hartzell shaking his head yes. I think that they are always looking for opportunities and settings with which to train that quite likely have not asked, this is the first I've been asked as city manager, for a Hold Harmless Agreement, so there will be other opportunities to conduct training with not such potentially significant impact if there was an injury.
So the consensus I'm getting from our council is we do not want to move forward with this? Go ahead.
Just a question. Is there any other events that other agencies might be participating in where we haven't been asked for a Hold Harmless Agreement?
I'm sure there is.
Yeah.
Over the years, certainly.
All the time, yeah.
Okay, but not in a competition, which is what?
It's not a competition.
Just training?
I think the developer's the one asking for the Hold Harmless, because this is South Housing down at Patrick that's going to be demoed eventually, but the developer wants to not be liable for anything.
So I think our consensus here, am I correct, that we are not going to sign a Hold Harmless?
Correct.
So I probably need a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we do not sign a Hold Harmless Agreement for the SWAT team to participate in this activity.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And one last item is, just after the Christmas parade, we had a discussion about next year's parade, and y'all had voted and directed me to, as one of the three partners, if you will, it's COCO, the county, and Rockledge, to ask for a day parade. So Mr. Wilson represented us at that meeting, and the three parties agreed to have a day parade next year. However, when we talked, we talked about it, it was at 10:00 AM, you know, years ago, it was 10:00 AM. I just wanted to make sure council knew that the committee is looking at a 3:00 PM start time. So it's still daytime and still likely at done by 4:00 to 4:30-ish, so those of you who have evening events can still go to your evening events, but I just wanted to make sure that council was aware that it would be 3:00 PM start time instead of 10:00 AM. Okay.
Everybody understand that?
Everything, okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. That does conclude my report.
You. Okay. City Attorney litigation report, none. Boy, this is an easy meeting today. Reports from dais, city clerk.
Nothing.
City Attorney.
Just a heads up, I'm finishing up the preparation of five debris and tree-cutting services contracts. You'll probably be seeing those for action at the next meeting. They're for FEMA. They allow us to have existing contracts in place, and that's what they're for. If you have any questions about them before the meeting and once they get on the agenda, please just give me a call, and I'll be more than happy to explain any of the provisions that are in them. As for the, I probably have made enemies of everyone on the police department SWAT team, but I'll have to live with that.
Invite them to your house to train.
What's that? That would, boy, that would violate so many things. Anyway, the mind runs amok on that one. And finally, just a personal note, I reported to the council that Peggy, my longtime assistant, had retired, and Ms. Brenda McCallum had taken over. She's in the audience today with her mother and her father, Mr. Dick and Joni McCallum, and came down to see, probably, if I actually did work for a living.
Brenda, I'm sorry.
And unless someone has any questions, I have nothing else. Thank you.
Councilman Hartzell.
Just want to mention that the Quonis Club of Rockledge has completed its shoe fund distributions for the year. We've distributed over 868 pairs of shoes, which is major effort for a little club like ours, so any help would be appreciated, whether monetarily or coming out and putting on shoes, like the police department helps us put on shoes.
Great.
And that's it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martin. Pass. Dr. Smith.
I pass.
Dr. Ferguson.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to share that I did have the opportunity, along with Dr. Brenda Fettro and Deputy Mayor Forrester, to be a part of the Florida League of Cities Legislative Action Days. I will say this, as we get into this, so everyone kind of knows who they are. The Florida League of Cities is a united voice for the Florida's municipal governments. Of course, its goals are to serve the needs of the Florida cities and promote self-government, we're aware. Legislative Action Days, valuable opportunity, and it was very valuable for me, for the opportunity to get not only to know the issues, but to see how things work, and even get the opportunity to meet our legislators. We had the opportunity to be there on Tuesday, Wednesday, January 30 and 31. We had the opportunity, myself, along with those that traveled from here, the city of Rockledge, to meet with Representative Thad Altman's aide. We had the opportunity to meet personally with Representative Tom Goodson, Senator Debbie Mayfield, Senator Dorothy Hookel, and Representative Randy Fine. They were all an honor and a pleasure to meet. All the discussions and the time that we spent with them was very productive. I want to say personally, they didn't pay me for this, but Mr. Forrester, along with Dr. Brenda Fettro, did a marvelous job. I kind of tagged along, got an opportunity to really soak in the opportunity and the moment. And on a very sincere note, I learned so much. And on a very sincere note, I learned so much. For me, even when I walked in to the, to the Capitol itself, it took me a minute. I had to have one of those woo-sah moments to actually be in the place where everything takes place on behalf of this city. And it's, it's just an amazing opportunity, and I would invite everybody to take that opportunity. I think last time I was there, I was 14 or 15. So, to be there as an adult, to really see everything in action, it was a true honor. And I want to thank the City of Rockledge, obviously, for having me be a part of the delegation, and we really enjoyed it. And again, I think Deputy Mayor and Dr. Fettro, again, you guys did a tremendous job. I gleaned so much from them for the opportunities we had to meet with our representatives and senators. Thank you, Ariel.
Great, thank you. Councilman Dasky.
Just one thing. Some of you may know, some of you may not. So, I'm going to do some Jerry Butts from the Boaters Exchange. Kind of raise your hand or stand up. He does own the Boaters Exchange in Rockledge. Great person, and if you ever need any boating needs, go see Jerry.
Deputy Mayor.
Couple of things. I did go over to, the mayor's request went to Rockledge High this morning for the, to write Love Under Arms presentation, which is a group that is dedicated to reducing teen suicide. And it was a good presentation, earlier than I usually do business these days since I retired, but it was okay. And it, it was a good presentation, and it is a worthwhile organization. And turns out, one of the people that was there with the organization was a friend of my daughter, so, so that was interesting and a good organization if you ever have the opportunity to have any business with them. We did have a good trip to Tallahassee. I think we, hopefully, we'll see, I don't know. I don't know. Sometimes they, they tell you one thing and something else happens, but.
No, not politicians.
What can I tell you? But get some assurances on a couple of issues that we were up there talking about, and we'll see how well that plays out in the future. Jerry Sansom, our lobbyist, was very helpful. He, he's got a better memory than I do, man. He could rattle off every bill and where it was in the process and what committee it was in, and wow, he impressed me with that knowledge that he had. So, we also took it upon ourselves to do a little freelancing. We did not stick with the League of Cities' agenda the whole time. We kind of decided that, you know, we might have better results if we freelanced and went and talked to them, just the three of us. And I think Dr. Fettro and I, I think we had some conversation on the way back from the trip, that maybe that's what we want to look at, not to ignore the League of Cities, certainly, because we're going to support their platform, but as far as for getting what the City of Rockledge wants out of it, that maybe that's a better way to do it than going in a group of 10 or 15 people from the, from the same county. And that we probably want to start any conversations with our legislators before they get to Tallahassee next year. Those are a couple of lessons that we discussed on the way back as to how we might want to handle that in the future.
Good.
So, but other than that, it was, I thought, a good trip and learned a lot about the Capitol building and its elevator system, which is designed by someone who likes to drink a lot more alcohol than I do, I think. It was, it was kind of strange. You got to go up this elevator if you want to go to this floor, but if you want to go to a different floor, you go up this elevator, and then when you get to the elevator, you got to come down and go across the skywalk over to another building and take another elevator. It was strange. But we were, we spent a lot of time, I was a couple inches shorter by the time we got through walking around the Capitol that day.
Wow.
So, anyway, it was a good trip.
Great. Well, I appreciate all three of y'all going to represent the City of Rockledge. We certainly appreciate that as a city council. And not all of us can go every year, but some of us try to go, and the ones that do go, we really appreciate it. Okay, before I end this meeting, remind everybody that I'm still looking for your performance evaluation on the city manager. I've received three so far, and so there's several more that I still need to receive before the deadline of February the 23rd. Just throwing that out there. And remind everybody that we have another meeting, the 17th?
21st.
No, 21st. And also, the, on the 21st, at 4:30, we have a finance, a council finance and budget committee meeting as well, right before the council meeting for the ones that are on. That's myself, Dasky, Ferguson, and Forster. Okay? Mayor, you got it? All right. If there's nothing else for this council, I will adjourn at 6:35.